Go ahead and open the meeting. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I'm David Blumberg. We have Carolyn Mish as staff support from the city, and Bob Riddle, and Barry Smith, and Elizabeth Silver, and Sarah Northrup. And we'll just ask that each person who addresses the board give your name and address. And we'll start by hearing the first application, which is for a special permit for a larger and taller ground signed by Consulting &amp; Design LLC, Shell Oil, 506 Pleasant Street, North Hampton, map ID 398-32. Notice that this hearing was published on August 28th and September 4th. Before we start, though, let's decide who's voting on the first application, and maybe we can fix it up.
I think you have a choice.
Oh, it's the three.
Right. If all sole members are here.
Okay. Okay. I guess there's only an option if we are down a full member, okay. So that means the voting members will be Sarah, Barry, me, and Bob.
Yeah, Bob and the other one.
Bob's an alternate, so Sarah, Barry, and myself. Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and hear the first application.
From here?
Whatever is.
Oh, okay. Does everyone have a plan?
I have a small 11 by 17. It's a little easier to look at.
Thank you.
And?
What's his name? Is this his?
Yes, it is, yeah. Just might be instead of having a... Okay. And your name?
My, yes. For the record, I'm Ron Fortune. I'm consulting and designing, and I'm an agent for O'Connell Oil. They actually own an upper facility, and they have a lease on Dunkin' Donuts facility. The sign that we're talking about, it's a freestanding sign that is located in this southerly portion of the property and hangs over our neighbor's property, which is fine with this proposal. We are... We have high tension lines that are along here, and our shape of the sign, this flag shape, is actually in... This goes into the property. As you see, a kind of a dot on the larger sheet, you can see a gray tone line of whether the... Yes, the small sheet does show the gray tone. That gray tone that's in here.
And what is the gray tone?
It's the actual sign.
Oh, it's the existing sign. Oh, it's a pile of...
That flags into the neighbor's property.
Correct.
We're proposing this sign, which again would flag into... Away from the street, the posts would be at the same base, flags in. Again, the high tension lines are there, so we can't just put a goalpost sign, and we can't change the foundation base. These are standard size signs that are offered by the industry. And in representing to you, there are more than... There's the retail gas, which is the shell and the price on. Then there are the acceptance with the stock and shop illustrated on this sign. And then O'Connell Oil is the convenience store component, and then Dunkin' Donuts is in there as well. The rule for this zone is that we can only have 80 square feet. We currently have 85. The composites that we're showing with an LED price sign total 107.
And what about the height?
And the height we're showing at 23.5. These measurements were given to me. I did not actually go out and measure them, but that's what I'm understanding. And the new proposal would be to 26.6.
And what's the limit? What's the limit in this zone? It's 10 feet.
Yeah, required 10, yes. And that would be into the sidewalk. It would be any trucks that would go in there, that would be a problem for it being that low.
Well, we've had other cases. Worth of town, on the auto dealership. And what did we insist on then? Did we allow them to go to 15, or did we insist that they remained at 10?
15, but it's a different district from the highway business district, so 15 feet is the maximum.
15 feet is the maximum there. But even so, they complained bitterly that they wouldn't be able to get their trucks under and other things.
Sure, yeah.
But if that flag is going into the property, then there are no trucks going under that, right?
It's 19.8 clearance.
Yeah, this clearance is the... For cars, I mean, there is a tight area to get around here.
So have you done a sign layout that meets the 80 square foot?
Uh, no.
Is there a grandfathering issue?
Yeah, I was wondering that question.
No, there's no grandfathering. You're changing the sign. You're just changing out the panel, so you can do that.
But to comply with an 80 square feet and 10 feet high, oh, we wouldn't be able to put it on our property.
But you currently have 23.5, right?
No, currently we have 85.
No, I'm not talking about square feet. I'm talking about...
Oh, yes. Yes, we have 23.5.
Proposing to take that down and make it higher?
No, yes. I mean, if it is, my only concern is that clear distance underneath to having no higher than what's existing.
So right now, there's a clearance 19.8 to the underside of the higher sign, but we don't know what this clearance is here.
Yeah, that's the question. Do you know? Do you know what that is?
Well, this is like four feet. It's what is the clear, and then this is similar. If this is the scale, this is similar. Eight, this is a trick, to the 11.
Can you describe? I was just doing a little up on Google Earth, but this is on the property but inside the curb, so trucks are actually going on the outside, they're not going to be going under the sign.
They can be... They can get through here as well.
There's another driveway curfew on the other side?
Yeah, there's this other business that's here. We don't make it a practice to go there, but we're just concerned that our sign does get hit, may get hit.
I can't see where you're pointing to, where there's another driveway.
Right here, our neighbor, right in here.
I think it's the neighbor.
Why couldn't you just block off that access, then? Just put a little sort of thing so you can't drive through there?
Well, you'd be doing that on the neighbor's...
The property.
Is it the neighbor's property? I mean, it's got to be your property there somewhere.
Well, it's our... Our shirts is a cute angle. This angle is our actual property.
So part of the new sign would be on the neighbor's...
Yeah, what we're doing is getting closer to it being on our property by this design.
Who's the neighbor? Who's... What's the neighbor's business?
Isn't that that long gray building with a lot of commercial towns?
I think that's on the other side, if I'm not mistaken.
No.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
It's right by the dyke, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's that mixed use, yeah, mixed use commercial. There is one on the other side, too.
Yeah.
Where the...
Car wash.
The car wash and Divas is on the north side.
That's it.
So assuming this is to scale as this marked, this is approximately 13 feet clearance underneath, which is kind of what I expect.
Well, Divas is further down, I think, isn't it?
So to get your... If you're concerned about clearance, then it's a... You know, you give yourself clearance. You're choosing this nice big shell symbol and prioritizing the symbols you want and the sizes they are. And if you... If this layout is in the same direction, so the upper diagram shows the pole going out, and then the arm kicking to the left, and I saw on the drawing, this is a view from the north. So if this is a view from the north also using the same base...
So this flag would go in.
Okay.
Because of the high tension lines.
So this is a view from the south. So it's actually...
Yeah.
The flag is actually going the same direction.
They want this to be visible from anyone.
This is being from north. This is being from... So that's just... That's confusing to have it... So this would be double sided.
Yes.
So they have the same thing on both sides.
As the existing one is.
And the base is in the same location, the pole is essentially in the same location, but the signage is... And the signs are going in away from the street, but it's a different set. Okay.
And you had a question... I'm sorry. I had a question about all of these little pieces that are underneath the sign, you know, Stop &amp; Shop, the owner's car, Dunkin' Donut. It's not... Oh, I see. These are each almost two feet, right?
Yeah.
So those could be... I mean, I think, I mean, Barry referred to this earlier. We've had a lot of cases of signs that want... Places that want to be visible from the highway, and we've been pretty consistent about keeping them at 15 feet or less.
And this is a really sensitive area, because it's a gateway into town from the south that the city has a concept plan to improve, and an expansion of this magnitude is clearly contrary to that direction.
I don't think you could... Can I have a question? You have... There's another... There's actually a billboard sign for Shell, but it's not on this property, right? It's off premise, it's over there, and that's on the highway?
Yes.
And, yeah, so that's probably 30, 40 feet tall, I think, already for Shell.
Where on the highway in relation to... No, I can see this, but where in the highways in relation to the station, is it...
Well, you can see coming over the dike. If you're coming over the dike, it's right here.
If you're heading north or heading south?
No, heading north. So towards the station, there's a tall Shell sign here, and it's actually off premise. Someone coming this way.
Is that grandfathered in?
Yeah.
You can't do that.
No, you can't do that anymore.
Yeah, so that... And that... I can't see what to do from here, because it did pass to the situation right there.
Yeah, so you're coming over the dike and the Shell sign's there, and also from the highway you can see it.
Visibility on Pleasant Street really is not that much of an issue.
I mean, we don't... We don't worry about people knowing about the gas stations.
We don't need to feel guilty about going to 10 or 15 feet on the sign, right? Because there's this whole other huge thing that...
Right, there's also the canopy that has signs. I don't know if you can see that, but as you're coming down Pleasant Street, you can see the canopy is really pretty close to the road, too. So...
And those are...
You mean the canopy over the pumps?
Over the gas, yeah.
Over the pumps, yeah.
I'm not sure.
Are any of these signs illuminated?
Yes.
Are they...
They're all internally illuminated, and the price sign would be the LED changeable letter for the pricing change.
And those are red LEDs.
And they would meet the illumination standards?
Yes, and they're not a flashing light. They're just, again, just for changing... Changing the pricing. It avoids the tasking, getting out in any weather, cold, etc., changing the...
But the other sign, they're internally illuminated?
Yes, correct.
And, I mean, again, we've got what, the lumin standard?
Right, and we don't have discretion to wave, but that's the... Presumably, you're aware of that.
Yeah, we would have to comply, yes.
Could you live with 15 feet?
Well...
The sign is 16 feet without any post, and we would be right into the neighbor property. So there would be nothing clear underneath that thing.
Doesn't really... I mean, the idea that it needs to be clear underneath for trucks, trucks are taller than nine foot 11. So it's not clear for trucks.
Well, no, but right now it's 23. Oh, right now it's nine foot 11 clearance. Yes, so...
So then if you...
Yes, so now I'm not following, yes.
Yeah, if you have...
It's not currently.
If it's not clear for trucks, currently...
Currently, it's about 13 feet clearance.
Oh, it is, okay.
If you look at the upper drawing...
Yeah, but I mean, I'm talking about the proposed.
Right.
So the proposed is not going to be clear for trucks.
But...
So why worry about...
Your road is okay with it.
I mean, there's no reason for it to be this high itself for maximum visibility of the sign.
Right, so I'm not sure that there's even a reason to go up to 15 feet.
We... I thought we did something similar with the bowling alley sign almost across the street, Carolyn, where they came in looking for a bigger sign and... Do you remember that?
Yeah, I don't remember that. I can pull up.
And we... And it's that small sign that is much more in... Consistent with what the city's trying to achieve in that district. But that's a really good point, whoever made it, that even as proposed, you only have... You have less than 10 feet of clearance anyway. So that's inconsistent with the argument that the whole sign has to be bigger so that trucks can get underneath it to get to the...
Yeah, but we're not talking the tanker trucks and big, huge box trucks. We're just the standard three quarter ton pickup that has a rack on it. This is clear.
I see.
I see. The majority of our...
This is noting where the curb lines are. The vehicles that would pass under it would be going to that neighbor's property. And so the neighbor, K&amp;N Real Estate now, or formerly K&amp;N Real Estate, is... You say, you hear, is okay with that sign hanging over their property, and one would presume they would expect to be able to get clearance for people coming onto their property.
I guess I'm a little bit confused about the clearance issue at all, because the curb cuts on this drawing and where the bright shaded area is, I mean, it seems to me that people are coming in and turning left, and that's...
That's what I was... Built in here, and they're coming...
But if the truck comes in here, right? This is the curb cut. Why are they going into this sign at all?
They're not, but they're going over here to this proximity. We don't care about that.
You know, we do what the neighbor is asking for, actually.
One of the questions that Carolyn just raised is, could you just flip the whole flag around?
No, the high tension lines that are there, we're having to stay...
But if you're lower than that, then if it's only 10 or 15 feet high, then you'd be below that.
Then we're disturbing... We're caught in a catch 22. That's the point, this and this is...
What about moving it further north?
Then we're into our curb cut.
Well, beyond the curb cut, on the other side of the curb cut. There's a whole section here of, you know... Is there some reason, for example, it couldn't go somewhere here?
Yeah, we're into the travel path of these items. This is... We're a gas station. It's a high-through-foot facility, and travel is... This was a compromise that we're working with here, for it to work for all the scenarios that are particular to that...
I mean, the...
That site, height, the neighbor, the angle of our property, etc.
And what... And what Stop &amp; Shop, and O'Connell, and Dunkin' Donuts, we're all like to...
Let's see, yeah.
What is the... What are the dimensions on the very lowest base where the sign sits? You know, the platform?
I really don't know. I'm sorry, I don't know that. That's to remain. Carolyn, this is a question.
So your existing Shell sign, it says it's 23 feet 5 inches, and it's under the high tension lines now.
But it's...
The top of the Shell.
Right, and it's back.
But then the price sign projects towards the street, and it's slightly lower than that.
Yes.
Approximately 17 feet high, the top of the price sign.
So if you had a lower... So that fits under the current wires.
It works.
So if you had the total sign is less than 17 feet, then it could still flag out towards the street and not worry about the potential of pickup trucks.
There's also a thing that I think... An issue that was relevant to that is that it being sort of struck by trucks. The allowable square footage is 80 square feet. You're asking for 107, 27 square feet more than... If you were to remove two of those ancillary signs, then you would just about... You'd still be a little bit over the allowable limit, but not much. I mean, by a very, very small amount. So...
Well, wait, would those are only two feet each?
By six foot.
They're... We're talking about square footage.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about height before.
No. Well, we were talking about height, but you say this is relevant. That is, because if you took away the bottom two ancillary signs, then it sort of helps with the heightage by, what, four feet? What are those? Each of those are...
Yeah.
So you'd get... You'd get four extra feet that way. It also pretty much abide by the zoning ordinance.
Not for height, for square footage?
No, for square footage.
I understand that there was a discussion and a compromise of what folks would like the sign to be, but we don't see any effort to, you know, zoning.
Well, we can continue, so I can get back to my client with coming up with something that's a little bit more in line with what this discussion is. I'd like that privilege.
Sure.
So you could either do that or set some parameters as a condition, and then they can put... They can adjust the size to fit that and have whatever names or lettering they want.
And then you could claim on it as you wish, or as they wish.
In any case, I think you understand our concern.
Yes, that's what I suggested.
Yeah. I don't know, I have no objection.
See what they will come back with, if you... If it just doesn't want to appear.
No, I don't mind, but I think that Carolyn was echoing my thoughts, which is that, you know, I mean, the limit is 10 feet, and we haven't had a conversation within our group about whether or not we would increase that and make it an exception, but the most we've ever gone to in the last two years has been 15 feet. So I do think that when you talk to your client, that the conversation probably ought to be in that direction.
But it also is a thing that's allowed by right, for 15 feet and things. That is where height really came into division, and 15 feet.
We've stuck with the maximum height. In this case, it's 10 feet. So, you know, we would be making an exception in this district if we went to 15.
But there's unique circumstances here because of the environment that it's in, you know, the proximity to the neighbor, the angle of the property, and the high tension lines, and the sidewalk. So we don't interfere with any of those. If I could come back with at least investigating, well, again, what we could do that was closer to the rack, then we would entertain that, and see what happens at that point.
If your proposal was not increasing the nonconformity...
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We... You know, here you're going three feet higher, another 22 square feet, and so, you know, everything is...
Yep.
It's bigger and heavier, actually. So if there's an effort to, you know, comply, first off, then you have no trouble at all.
Okay, I will make that effort to get that message from my client.
Do you need permission and a vote to postpone or continue?
Yeah, so the next hearing would be actually October 9th, but September 25th is Rashisha, so we're not meeting. So let me just pull that up. I think it's October 9th, but...
Yeah, that's the second, there's...
So it could be... We aren't having things so far. There is a continuation of something nobody heard. It was that appeal, right, Olive Street. So I don't know if you want to do it at 5:30 ahead of that one, or do it after the appeal. Olive Street was taking a while.
When would the next meeting be after that?
After October 9th? Would be October 23rd.
I have a conflict on the next... Okay.
I might have to get better.
Well, I move that we continue this hearing until October 23rd.
At 5:30?
At 5:30.
5:30, yes.
Thank you. Seconds. Seconds, Sarah, on favor of this matter. October 23rd at 5:30 p.m. here. And so we have an appeal on the 9th?
Right.
Okay, so I guess we'll move to the second matter, which is the special permit for larger canopy and ground signs by Consulting &amp; Design LLC, Citco Gas, 15 Logan Street, North Hampton, map ID 248-217. Again, notice that this hearing was published on... For everyone who wasn't here at 5:30, it was published on August 28th and September 4th.
For the record, I'm Ron Fortune, consulting and designing, and an agent for Mutual Oil, who supplies the fuel for the... For this... There's some smaller samples. You should... Could you help?
Another pointy side.
There's two parts to this application. One is the freestanding sign that's shown on the plan. First, the site plan showing the location of the price sign, and basically a logo sign currently. The existing sign shown as a D mark and just a pride for a chicken, and the price sign. And the proposal for that sign is to remove all the signs on the post and install the trademark Citco and basically a LED price sign.
So this sign on the existing post...
Which is eight feet one inch tall, and the sign that's proposed is approximately four, so that would be at a height of 12 feet one inch.
So you're reducing it by really more than two feet?
Yes.
Then the...
And removing and downsizing the square footage from, I believe, 60 square... If I'm not mistaken, 60 square feet down to 32 square feet. The issue is that it's a... It's in a neighbor business zone, and... 20 square feet along.
But you're reducing the overall height from 14 feet to 12, and reducing the overall square footage from 60 square feet to 32 square feet.
That's correct. So we're trying to keep...
It's a free...
We like that.
In to comply. We like this one.
And the 10 feet is what zoning requires in the zone, I think.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, the neighbor business, yes.
Mr. Fortune, I have a question. It's, you know, probably...
Mr. Fortune, I have a question. It's probably not that one, but in this case, you're suggesting eliminating the co-advertising signs that were there. And in other cases, you're advocating adding them.
Right.
Are these like tie-ins and required to either add or not add?
This, this can, this is Citco as a supplier for the gas retail, where the owner on the previous site has this obligation for advertising of its tenants. And that's, and the packages that they have, and that's why you had those added.
And those are in the building, you pay for your gas, you go inside.
Yeah, the Dunkin' Donuts and the convenience store.
It's not there now, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, there's the Dunkin', on the other one. There is the Dunkin' on it, yeah.
Okay, so...
A price shout.
No, right now, there's the convenience store and the Dunkin' Donuts on the other one on Constance.
Oh, yes, yes, they exist, yes.
But they're not on the sign.
One of them wants Dunkin' Donuts in it.
Right, so that's the...
So they're adding the convenience stores to the sign.
But no, this, this would be this owner's and supplier's choice. That they're okay with this proposal. The, there's a large building sign on the mansard, Z-mark, at this location for noting that the convenience store component.
I mean, nobody's, I don't, I think I could speak generally, generically, saying nobody's gonna have a problem with lowering, reducing the size. I guess the only question is about the lighting and...
And also this time we have a second sign. We have the canopy letter and not just the gas.
Yes, right, and on this application, it also, we are including, we were granted through the building process, this word Citco on each end. The client is asking that we propose the TriMark, which is the logo for Citco, and then a price sign. And one of the, one of the things that was pointed out is that because of the complexity of the lot, the smoke blowing, this does get hidden sometimes, this sign.
Price pod is the, you're talking about the...
It would be the next, it would be the next sheet.
Next to the word Citco on a canopy, a price display.
Facing Elm Street.
And currently, there is a, the word Citco on that place.
Right, here's, we have the existing.
Yeah.
And then the third sheet has the proposed TriMark.
Just in one place.
Facing.
Yes.
And that's fifteen feet under, underside, so we're eighteen foot high. And then again, this pod is no higher than the top of the canopy.
And all elimination will be, has to conform.
Right.
As City Code requires.
I had a question about that, the LED pod, to call.
Yes.
So I think this had come up with Cumberland Farms, and I wanted to know, I think they said that at night, there's a dimmer on the LED that could, is that standard or do you have to set it for that?
There's, the flashing, this does not have, all right, and this is a moderate intensity, but it does diminish light at night. But it needs to be brighter than that during the day for it to be seen because of just regular lighting. And that's a, it's pretty much just industry standard.
So it's automatically dimmed or you have to set it?
No, it's, my understanding is automatically it's done, whether or not there's a, you know, a device that dictates it. But I know that that's what does happen.
Toby, can we make it, we can make it a requirement?
Yeah, sure.
I'm thinking there are patients across the street in rooms at Cooley Dickinson, and if it's glaring at night, we want to be sensitive to that.
Right. LEDs, to me, the red is chosen because it carries, like a red sunset, red carries better than any other light. It spreads more than any other light. And the Academy of Music rankles me every time I don't mind it just too bright. And I complain about it.
And there are people that live across the street from that.
Yes. So, so it really needs to have an automatic dimmer and that's really up to the person installing the dimmer. There's a little eye on it and you couldn't point it up. It's going to come with smell, you know, that sort of thing. So the question is exactly which of these is under our jurisdiction? Not, not the ones on the canopy?
Right, that's, they've been already...
The two ends of the canopy are already terminated.
Would just be the face of the canopy and then the freestanding sign is proposed.
So the face of the canopy is, and the, both of those are in addition to what is allowed by right, correct?
And the face of the canopy is where the LED price display is gonna be?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's also on the, we're asking for it on the freestanding sign, which we're allowed, my understanding is we're allowed the freestanding sign.
You're, you're changing it so that, because it doesn't meet the height requirement, that's also part of the...
Yeah, right.
So it's nice that the proposal for the freestanding, the new freestanding sign is smaller, although it is still greater than allowed, therefore the need for the special permit.
Correct.
And then the, the LED light up on the canopy. Both, are both of those, is the white Citco with the TriMark also illuminated? But the ones on the ends of the canopy are not eliminated? So this one is the white from behind?
Yes.
Does the, did you say the ends are eliminated or the face facing Elm Street?
The one proposed facing Elm Street is...
Plus, it's their logo.
But there's backlit.
Yes.
Right, okay. And is the back, is the lighting changing in the canopy at all or is it gonna continue what's there?
It's continuing. I've not instructed to, you know, change over LED, which is a lot of times will happen, but no, not to my knowledge.
Because we had a problem with the, with the, when there were lights that were changing the canopy outside of permitting and they were far too, they exceeded our light levels and we had difficulty, and I'm not sure that they're in compliance now. So I just wanted to make sure the canopy, at least what was in the jurisdiction, despite whether they're changing it out, meets the standard.
In terms of the timing on the lights, do we know what the business hours are?
Oh, no, you're not.
It will close. It's not at twenty-four, seven, eight.
I'm not certain of that.
Excuse me.
Five to eleven? That's the current operation, ready to operate time and no plan to change it.
We have control over the timing, right, of the light on the side panel?
I believe it's within a half an hour.
Sure, I'll just ask, is there anyone here who wanted to address this application? This is for the Citco convenience store on Locust Street across from Cooley Dickinson Hospital.
Yes.
Yeah.
I live down on Dickinson Street. My only concern with it is just the lighting also.
Can you just state your name and address?
Sure. Magali Barajas Román. I live at ten Dickinson Street.
Okay. And you just want to express your concern?
I just, I think you guys are already clearly my concern. You know, the, the lighting scene, not having seen the plan, I had seen, I had gotten special notice in the mail, but the lighting is just a concern, especially the LEDs. They are very bright. And no other, so no other businesses on that Locust Street block have LEDs or any sort of, you know, neon sign or anything like that, so I just, I'm just concerned with that.
All right, okay. And anyone else?
My name is Catherine McKeon. I live adjacent to the Z-mark complex. And I was also concerned about light and brightness concerns. The lights in that complex are already quite bright and I didn't want them to get brighter.
Okay, thank you. One, just any, any, I'll give you a chance, but anyone else here to address this application?
Yes, I also live on Dickinson Street. My name is Elizabeth Barajas Román. I also live on ten Dickinson Street. And I'm just concerned about the lights as well. They are very bright. As, as my lady mentioned, there are no other businesses on that street with kind of neon lighting or anything like that. The very residential area is across from the park. The hospital is along that way, but it, once you get into the neighborhood, it's very residential.
So Dickinson is behind where we are?
It's right across, basically, yeah. So it, so yeah, it's, it's just also the tone of the neighborhood as well.
Okay, thank you.
Across the street.
Yes. And did you want to comment?
Yes, my point, thank you, was that we are reducing that freestanding sign that's the closest to that intersection by almost thirty square feet. We're actually reducing, or asking that we reduce that.
But you're adding an LED price display to that.
That's correct.
Smaller, but it's gonna be lit up with more, what?
Lights.
Yeah. And then the other one is facing the hospital directly?
Yes.
Is there some reason it can't be dimmed even when it's still open for business?
Well, you can have a time, so it goes up half hour or an hour after the close of business. And then that, so that means the rest of the night after eleven or twelve, it would be off? But you're talking about between the dark and eleven?
Help me with the word dim then, because dim to me is not off. Dim is...
Right.
So there's a difference between dim and off. And I, my question is, if you're saying dim, do you mean dim or do you mean off? And if it's dim, then is there some reason it couldn't be dimmed as it's getting, while the business is still open, but it's still, you know, late?
Well, I think even you were saying that it's not necessary, it's necessary to be brighter during the day because of ambient light.
Right.
And it's not necessary to be as bright at night, even when the business is open, because it's dark around and you don't, I think what you're saying...
Yes.
And this industry has noted that the, the higher intensity lights, they glare and melt together, almost, you know, they flare out almost, and that doesn't work. You can't see it, so it's not a good thing for the industry.
Right.
And so they, they're very sensitive to it.
But is there a way we can quantify a dimmer?
Well, I mean, maybe, I don't know, a percentage? I don't know if that's possible. Fifty percent of the daylight?
The ones I've installed, this is on some internally LED lit, it's dark monument signs. Let me ask you this. They have, there's a sensor that sees, okay, it's bright out and therefore the lights inside have to be brighter or else the image disappears. And then if it's, but if it's a darker day, then, or, and then at dusk, it sees, okay, the lights don't need to be as bright because they stand out much better in the dark. So they actually dim at night and then off is a completely different switch. That's a, that's a timer switch.
It's already pre-programmed, is what you're saying, sort of to go to a certain level based on the ambient light?
Yes.
If the canopy is already got lights that we can't do anything about because it's been decided, right?
Sure we could.
No, the canopy lights need to meet the zoning requirement, so they, you can, and they're coming for a sign, so you can reiterate that if they're too bright now, they need to be changed out and comply with the order.
I guess my question is, and everyone, I do appreciate the reduction in size, but my question is, is there some reason that needs to be dimmed at all? If they already have other lights?
Well, I think it's the price sign, it's electronic lettering for the, and it's, I mean, that's... Short of that, then they would have a backlit and they'd go in and hand replace the price signs. So this is the new technology, instead of having to go up with little labels.
If we're talking about the LED price display, it's, if it's not lit, it's off and not visible. But I, but you might be talking about the rest of the canopy?
We can control the downlighting by shielding the lights that are there. And I believe that that was done for along the back of that street on this property. As far as the LED lighting of the price, someone has to get out there and replace these letters. And one instance that we had is somebody did get hurt, it seems hard to believe, but they, you know, during the winter, those things, if they come down off that suction truck, they can use a damage. And that is one instance that, and this is a costly endeavor to do this, but, and it's not for just for that reason that we're doing that. It is an easy thing to change rather than have someone go out there and change their pricing. And that is the, and this is the standard, almost, but where we're going in the, in the annual industry.
But Elizabeth, is that what you were suggesting, that considering, instead of using LED displays for the pricing to sort of go back to the unlit or interbacklit?
Yeah, I, I think it's a question. I mean, I'm not sure if it is realistic. I'm just incredibly sensitive to the neighborhood and, you know, a residential neighborhood. And if the business is open until eleven o'clock at night, you know what that means. And that's a lot of light late. And even if it's, especially if it's another power beyond that, so, I mean, I...
But if we could quantify a restriction in our decision, like a reduction at or below fifty percent of the... Of course, I don't know, I don't know what that means, but that's the problem. Maybe, maybe you know, Sarah, from experience.
Yeah, but I'd have to see the specs of the actual piece of equipment, the electrical spec of it, to, to really be able to tell. And, and that's something maybe we look at being a little more specific in the reg, but around these signs because they're becoming ubiquitous. But for this application, under our existing zoning, as long as he's complying with our existing zoning, the question is, are we okay with this freestanding sign in combination of this one-up on the canopy?
With the dimmer as presented, that it would automatically, it's automatically gonna dim after?
All LEDs dim automatically when there's ambient light and the, the rest of the signage all goes off at closing. I don't, I don't really see a problem with this application, the way it's coming towards. So the, as the proposal is, does the proposal speak to time? I didn't, I didn't see that.
It did.
I don't think so. And I was, I didn't notice something about it automatically dimming. That's, that in the application?
No, just as part of the...
Oh, as the, the...
As well as...
In presentation.
That is the industry.
So maybe we could address those points. We could, we could have a, a time when it has to be turned off, basically, after closing. And so that it wouldn't be on, on all night long. And, and then after dusk, a requirement that the dim, the display, the lighting level be dimmed.
I have concerns on both ends of the day because in the winter, five A.M., it's dark. And if all of a sudden these lights are coming on, you know, at five A.M., when the business opens.
They'd be coming on at five A.M., but not at their full intensity.
Because it's still dark.
The ambient light.
It'd be the same as what they look like at ten-thirty P.M., I guess.
That's true, they're coming on at five.
Well, do we feel like we have enough information to close the public hearing?
We don't.
Is there any, is anyone else have any comments from the public on this application? I don't see any others.
I move we close the public hearing.
All in favor of this matter?
Thank you.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna, you should stay for discussion.
Yeah.
So are we, is anyone ready to propose a motion or do we need to talk about these details about dimming and timing a little bit more?
Well, it seems like the application as proposed is good. We're just adding a couple of conditions. Well, it seems like the application as, as proposed is good, we're just adding a couple of conditions. Like, let's bring the existing canopy lighting into compliance.
Yeah, that's critical.
And, because that's a non-starter, you can't.
And that should improve the situation right off the bat in terms of excessive lighting.
And if, and if someone's going to go and check what the luminous are at the property line or impacting the neighborhood, you can't measure the proposed lighting with the existing condition.
And as a result of that, my proposal would be that there be a review after a period of time, whether six months after the winter, C O R, to check on the lighting and four years.
The building commissioner would always, I mean, would always, if you have the conditions and they, he would check to make sure that there's compliance. And if the lights get switched out again, then there's still the record that the conditions stand. They have to comply with the lighting and that the, you know, if you'd go with the condition, they'd be turned off a half hour after close.
Then it becomes an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
Is there a mechanism? I know for some permits, well, it used to be with the home occupation, they'd have to come back, but if there were complaints, those complaints would go to the building inspector and he would investigate possible enforcement action. Is that, does that make people comfortable enough?
It does me.
You know, I think the neighbors are going to be happier with the proposed condition. We don't, that's residential neighborhood, the other impacted property would be the hospital. And, we don't know what they think of it.
But you haven't received them, so no correspondence to your office?
They're notified and there are trees and et cetera, so.
So what other, you were starting to list conditions. One was that off the bat, there has to be, the existing condition has to be brought into compliance with the lighting ordinance.
And the other one just being that the industry standard dimmers be on the LED.
Right. And third, timing, lights go off after closing and off until opening in the morning?
Correct.
Do you want to make that into a motion, Sarah?
I move that we approve the application as presented, under the conditions that the existing canopy lighting be brought into compliance and the proposed LED lighting have standard dimmers. What's the phrase? Standard dimmer with.
Light sensors?
To, yeah, for, for, with ambient lights, that's, that's it, thank you.
And about three hours early.
And that the lights be turned off, no later than, what was closing, was it eleven?
Eleven fifteen, Mike.
Eleven fifteen and, you know, earlier than five AM.
I don't know, you say, you know, like, no later than fifteen minutes after closing?
Yeah, I was thinking the same.
Because the closing time could change.
Right.
I mean, if they start closing earlier than.
Or if they start opening later, no, no earlier than fifteen minutes before opening. Because that gives the owner more flexibility and they're not locked in forever to.
Two minutes after closing.
Yeah.
Thank you, so.
Second?
Very second. Any discussion, everyone comfortable? So all in favor, if that's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, neighbors, for coming. We appreciate your input.
The third and last item on the agenda is the application for a special permit amendment of a ground sign by Design Workshop Inc. at Lyndon Manor, three forty-nine Haydenville Road, LEEDS map ID six dash five five. If you could just tell us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Deanna Crispel and Brian Hale from Design Workshop.
We're in New Orchard Mills in Springfield.
Thank you. And could you just tell us a little bit about the application or the amendment, I guess, that you're requesting?
Yeah, we installed the original sign, which is relatively modest for the size of the facility about twelve years ago. And it cuts that sign at sixty inches by forty-three inches. It's a double-sided, hand carved sign with a gold leaf, a very attractive, modest sign. I think you all have pictures of it. And the facility has added a whole, another building, which is the Lyndon Manor Assisted Living Community. And rather than adding another sign, they would like to have a larger sign which combines the information from both facilities.
Similar to what you just ran, got in a little bit of interest.
So we're going from a sixty inch by forty-three inch sign to a ninety inch by fifty-nine inch sign?
Yeah, of course.
Yes, or was it what we would like today?
How, how is this going to be lit?
They have some lights on the ground.
Ground, up.
It's back a bit from the road and up a little bit, so it's not really, the lighting, I don't think there's any kind of issue with the traffic going by.
And Carolyn, no correspondence received by your office, objections, anything else?
You'd have essentially the same lighting that shows on this existing sign?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I think they may move it back a little bit, but pretty much the same spot.
It's not residential, is it, around there, is there?
Yeah.
There is a house next door.
Oh, there is? So you, in this picture, you can actually see a house on the abiding parcel, right there?
Yeah, there's a house with a fence and I think there's a bus stop right, right there, right across from the sign.
I think there was a bit of controversy when the big additional facility was first permitted. But this is kind of a afterthought, I suppose, this sign adjustment.
So will the lights go out at night? Or are they going to be on all night?
Ambulance go there, things like that.
Yeah, I think it probably should be allowed to be on.
All night?
It should, it would be the same lighting that's been there for.
Yeah, whatever it is.
However many years they.
It might be on at five, we really don't know.
We didn't put the lighting in, the customer did the lighting.
I, I don't have a problem with this. I'm just trying to figure out, under the reading of the ordinance, how are we authorized to do this? I'm sure we are, but.
Going from.
Because it's an amendment, is that what?
It's an amendment, but also it's bigger, it's a bigger sign, so you, there's something, if there's something unique about the character of the building or its location relative to other buildings in the district that warrant a larger sign or, you know, different setbacks or different standards. It's a language I think I took under the first.
Yes, three fifty dash seven point four dash three A.
What they're proposing in a way is that instead of putting up another sign
Right.
for the new facility, that they combine both signs onto this one post, just for.
And, and that's the part that you could argue.
Exactly.
It's, we figure it's the most efficient way to do it, the least.
Less clutter.
Yeah, the least annoying visually.
It's going from approximately, uh.
Was it thirty?
Less than five, five, which is less than twenty square feet to approximately less than forty square.
Exactly.
It'll be under forty, yes.
This is almost doubling in size, but the, is the, the height off of the ground the same?
No, it's a little taller. It'll be ninety inches to the top.
And the space underneath it?
I think it's, I think it's a little, I think it's pretty similar. I think it's just a little bit more, it's nine foot above ground.
Thirty inches of underneath it, this space on.
Yeah, just enough to allow for snow not blocking it, pretty much.
That's optimistic.
Well, we're hoping, yeah. Hopefully it won't be plowing right by the sign, but who knows?
Okay, and I'm seeing no one here from the public to address this application. Any other questions from the board or the applicant?
I have none.
Not, a motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
Okay, Sarah, very second. And then all in favor of closing the public hearing, that's unanimous. And then, does anybody want to pose a motion on the application?
I propose that we approve a special permit for a ground sign at Lyndon Manor, three forty-nine Haydenville Road, LEEDS map ID number sixty five point five five.
Except this is a special permit amendment?
Yeah.
It's actually an amendment to an existing special.
Yes, okay. I approve the special permit amendment. I don't see that we need any conditions.
Okay, a second on the motion?
Second.
And a discussion? Case, there's none, all in favor, so that's unanimous.
Okay. Any ideas, like?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have two sets of minutes that we should vote on. August fourteenth. Well, let's go in order, July seventeenth, that was the one with. Oh, we didn't hear for that one either, that was, that's.
Nice, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye, goodnight. Seventeen James Avenue, the expansion of the non-performing set cap. Is that minutes, people?
Yes.
And then, and then maybe we can do them together, the minutes from August fourteenth, and that was the. The business about the, yeah, the propane tank.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We're stalling record here.
So, but the, the issue is, are the, a motion to approve the minutes for both of those, for both of those hearings?
I move we approve the minutes.
Yeah, second. Is there an issue with the minutes?
No.
Second.
Okay, because that's, that's the only issue, right, procedurally? Okay, so Sarah seconded approval of the minutes. All in favor of approving the minutes, that's unanimous. And I guess we just move to adjourn and. And then you're allowed to, you're allowed to talk about things after the fact, right? Yeah. So motion to adjourn, seconded, Sarah, all in favor, unanimous.